Hi, everybody. Welcome to With Bowl and Spoon, a podcast about people's personal food evolution. I'm here with my friend Cassie. Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself?
I'm Cassie Schnefer. Um, is this where I tell people where we know each other or how we know each other? Although we don't really know the answer to that question.
I think it's Pittsburgh.
Yes, I think Pittsburgh is the answer.
And you said I say that all the time, so it was really good to hear you say that. Yeah, no, um...
It's the biggest little town in America.
It really is. And, and it's, that's the thing where if you're here for more than 10 years, you're just like, "I know you."
Yeah.
And I'm not sure which circle of influence you come from, but, uh, but we know each other from the farmer's market.
Yeah.
But you, you remember more than I do. So go ahead, you can tell the story.
I mean, the, the first time that I remember meeting you was, I was part of Oakland Community Council. I lived in South Oakland.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I was there for like 20 years. And at some point, we decided we were doing a community garden. And the first step in that process was to convene a community meeting to just kind of talk about what people thought that meant. And I remember you conducting that meeting. And I don't remember what, like, how you came to be the person conducting that meeting, but I do remember that it was you. So...
That was with the Oakland Bid, right? The Oakland Business Improvement District? And, uh, oh gosh, what was the director's name there? I can't remember her name, but she knew about me and that I did urban agriculture. So she asked me to come in and do that. So yeah, that was fun.
Yeah.
And I understand the garden is still there.
As far as I know, yeah. I actually, I moved out of that neighborhood about almost 10 years ago now.
That was an interesting project.
Yeah.
Some hits, some misses, but whatever. And I'm glad it's still going on. I love, I love when I hear about projects that I had a tiny little part to do in and it's...
And then they outlived you. Yeah, that's what it's supposed to be.
Legacies, for sure. So, um, tell me about you.
So, um, well, let's talk a little bit about farmers markets since that's like our current connection.
Yes, farmers markets.
Um, so for the last nine years, I have been doing farmers markets for Olive and Marlo, which is, uh, olive oils and balsamic vinegars. Um, it's owned by a woman named Heather Kramer. And she and I were part of the same sort of crunchy moms online group. Um, and at that time, I was working an academic year at Carnegie Mellon. And during the summer, I would be off of work and I was looking for something interesting to do during the summer and posted to that mom's group. And she said, "Oh my gosh, I have this business and we're gonna start doing farmers markets. Do you wanna do that?" I was a chef at CMU. It seemed like a natural idea. So I started doing farmers markets for her and have, it's kind of been my full-time summer job for the last nine years. And, um, this is the first summer, I'm not third time doing it, cuz I left cooking and have a different nine-to-five job now, so.
Oh, wow. So, um, do they still have a brick and mortar site? They had one in East Liberty for a while, right?
She did. It was a beautiful space. No, no. What she figured out was that having a brick and mortar site is expensive.
Oh, yeah.
And that most of her sales were coming online or at farmers markets anyway. So it just made sense. And she also has some young children and, um...
Olive and Marlo, I believe?
Olive, Marlo, and Tulpen.
Oh, there's another one.
There's a third one. But I think she found, you know, moving the work part of the business, the bottling and operations back to, you know, someplace that was not a standard business hour operation gave her more time to spend with her kids. And so, that's been a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure. What is your full-time gig now?
I am the constituent relations advisor to State Representative Abigail Salisbury.
Oh, excellent. Okay, that's probably another way that I know you. Or maybe that's how I know Abigail, cuz I don't know, Facebook has been a real community builder for me. It's great.
Um, I'm also a borough council person in Braddock Hills.
Oh, wow. So you said you were a chef at CMU?
Yeah, I spent the last 20 years being a chef. The last decade of them being the house chef to a large fraternity at Carnegie Mellon. So I operated a commercial kitchen inside a frat house and, uh, cooked lunch and dinner Monday through Friday and did a lot of like surrogate mothering to those kids. And prior to that, I was a real chef in like restaurants and private clubs and things like that.
I didn't even know fraternity chef was a thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really wild.
Yeah.
So how did you end up getting that?
So I was the sous chef at Square Cafe in Regent Square and was getting progressively more pregnant. And was, it was becoming difficult to saute because my belly was in between me and this joke. Um, and my midwife kept saying, "You know, you should probably sit down every so often." And I was like, "I can't." So I left there, had a kid, decided that I really, if I could manage it, I wanted to take a year off and kind of figure out how to be a mom. So I did that and like was sort of hitting the end of that year, wanted to get back to work, answered a Craigslist ad for cooking on Carnegie Mellon campus, was hired by a fraternity, worked for them for about a year and a half. During that window of time, my husband, who was also a cook, was looking for a new job. The fraternity next to the one I was working in was looking for a new cook, and so I sent him over there. So for a brief window of time, we were working next door to each other. I left the fraternity that I had been working for, did some other things, started maybe kind of going back to school a little bit. I worked on the Fresh Project, which was a big research study in the Hill District in Homewood, looking at food deserts.
P-H-R-E-S-H?
Yes.
Yes.
And then my husband had to leave the job and the research project I was on was starting to wrap up. And I was like, "I could do this some more." So I went back into his kitchen and took that over from him and stayed there for like nine years.
That's great. Was that as fun as it sounds?
Most of the time, yeah. Yeah, it really was. Cuz I don't, I kind of thrive in chaos, which is one of the things that made me good at being cooking professionally.
Yeah.
Um, and that's an extra chaotic environment, so.
Anyone who's worked in a kitchen understands that entirely, for sure.
Exactly, yeah. Takes a special kind of crazy. Um, but I feel like I should mention, prior to becoming a cook, I worked at, uh, in Pittsburgh News Weekly for I don't know how many years and then moved over to City Paper for a little while. And it was going to City Paper that convinced me to quit and go to culinary school, so.
Oh, okay. What did you write about?
I wasn't a writer. I was, I was in advertising sales.
Oh, okay, gotcha. So you're in advertising sales and you decided from doing that work that you wanted to go to culinary school?
Yes.
Okay. How did that happen?
I don't know.
Okay.
No, cuz it was honestly like something, like I had thought about it on and off, but I was not somebody that cooked a lot at home. And when I said to my husband, "I'm thinking about doing this," like he thought it was hysterical. He thought I was kidding. You know, I mean, because I really like...
Because he was a chef.
He was a cook, yeah. And, but it just like, I liked to bake, but not so much cook. And then, and this, this, it's, it's almost silly. I read the book Kitchen Confidential. It was Anthony Bourdain. I read the book and I was like, "I see myself in here." And like I finished the book, picked up the phone, called the American Culinary Federation apprenticeship location in the area and was like, "How do I get signed up?" And just did it.
Wow.
Yeah. It was a total leap of faith.
I thought it was gonna be something like you sold advertising for a restaurant and you were so inspired that you wanted to work in that field. Okay, but no.
No, no. In fact, most of my advertising clients were the adult ads.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the book is a really good inspiration.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Fantastic inspiration for it. I like that very much. What is your favorite thing to cook?
So I still, um, do a little catering here and there, just for fun. I love doing like hors d'oeuvres. I love doing lots of little pretty things. I also really enjoy doing sort of southern soul food kind of stuff. I love a good, making a good barbecue. I love cornbread. I, yeah.
Where did you grow up? Here in Pittsburgh?
I did, in the North Hills, Etna and Shaler. And my mother had a degree in home economics.
Oh, so all of the home economics. That's, yeah. I remember Home Ec when they used to, for listeners who are too young to remember Home Ec, home, home economics was all of the, the things you do around the house that don't actually get, that you're not actually paid for.
I think, I think they now refer to it more as consumer science, um, you know, but it's, it's...
That is a weird name too. I just, I don't understand where that comes from. But it was, it was, uh, how to, um, cook and sew and mend and...
Manage a budget and, you know, all of those like skills that really are quite useful.
Do you know what's really interesting? I was talking with a friend who advises, um, indigenous tribes around North and South America around capitalism. He's, he's a social capitalist. And he goes in and sort of translates, I mean, sometimes he needs a translator for the language, but he's able to translate the capitalism, you know, words and concepts for these indigenous tribes. And most of the people, now I think he said exclusively, all of the people that he works with in these indigenous tribes around economic development are women. Women are the primary economic development, uh, players in indigenous cultures. And that was just really, really surprising to me. It's really interesting. So the fact that home economics was, it was, it was seen as a girl thing, as a woman thing, as a girl thing.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Yeah.
We'll just go right for the, yeah, that's exactly what it was. Yeah, guys didn't have to take, they took auto shop. I took auto shop in high school because I was a rebel like that.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely, I took, I took wood shop and metal shop, but I did also take Home Ec classes. I think because I knew it would be an easy...
Well, you grew up with it.
Yeah. And then, and the person who taught Home Ec at my high school had gone to college with my mother. Now, my mother didn't work in that field. She was the director of personnel at St. Francis Hospital.
Oh, okay.
But she had been a Home Ec teacher, like when she first came out of college.
Okay. So you grew up with that. And that's really interesting though, because it was seen as women's work and that invisible work and that whole culture there. How did that play out in your, your life?
I mean, I suppose I never saw it that way. I was older when it occurred to me that that's how people saw it. Because my mother was hardcore feminist, you know, and most of my, from I guess probably about third grade on, she was a single mom. You know, and so I saw her as a very strong, accomplished woman. It never occurred to me until later that like, "Oh, these are like the realms that she studied where things that were not, you know, were like almost exclusively women studying it." And, um, yeah, it's kind of weird. But I definitely see that influence in my life, you know, that I'm very methodical and process oriented and, and that was how she taught me to like manage a home, you know, so.
A thing that not a lot of people learn, actually. It's really kind of bonkers.
Yeah.
And I'm just trying to think back to my, when, when did I, how did I learn that? I guess I... It's really fascinating. So your mom, did she have a pretty well-managed household? Was it like, did she work outside the home?
She did work outside the home. She was good at prioritizing. Like, these are the things that should be done a very specific way because it makes our lives easier. And the rest, we could just kind of like, woo, have fun with, you know, um, but she did. She cooked a lot. She sewed a lot. Yeah.
Sounds like a lot of structure. Like, there's, there's structured
Right.
chaos and there's structure. So it sounds like you had structured, structured time and then structured chaos time.
Yeah, I mean, because she was also a very creative, artistic person and, you know, yeah. So it was a good mix.
Yeah. That sounds great.
Focus on getting the have-tos done and then you can have fun with the rest of the time.
Getting the what? Oh, have-tos.
The have-tos.
What's a have-to? Gotcha.
Yeah. Yeah, you have to, you have to feed yourself. You have to have clean clothes. You should probably clean the bathroom once a week. And then the rest of the time, do whatever you want, so.
That's great. So, but once you have it like organized and it's, it's, then it's not a struggle.
Right.
It's not a struggle. It's just part of what you do and it becomes habit and then it's not. So your learning curve, curve into adulthood.
Yeah.
Was pretty seamless. That's good. So you said your mom was into art and stuff. Was that a big part of your life too?
I am not visually artistic. I do, I have sung with a number of bands over the years. I still perform periodically. Grew up as a musical theater kid. Yeah. I mean, but my mom did pottery and made quilts and, you know, and stuff like that. She was also like very accomplished musically, but yeah, I'm just, the visual side, I didn't get that.
I mean, it's the arts, however it comes forth in your life. And I mean, to say like, "Oh, you know, my mom was an artist, but I just did musical theater." Come on, that's pretty cool. That's super fun. So you had, you had a touch of the dramatic?
Indeed. I would say more than a touch, but yeah.
What the response like, "Indeed"? You were talking about how food and community go hand in hand. You like to create community around food. Can you talk about that?
So what I was mentioning, like the, the work that I was doing at the fraternity, that's the part of it that I am most proud of, was building that community. Um, because they would sit down to eat dinner together every night as a group. Um, and that was, they would not have done that otherwise. Um, and so I used to really enjoy, like two guys would serve as waiters and take all the plates out from the kitchen after I plated things.
How many people were there?
You know, it varied year to year. I mean, sometimes it was as small as 16, 17, and sometimes it was 30, you know? Um, and then they would have lots of events that were much larger that, uh, I'd feed people for those too. But just the, almost every night, I would look out into the dining room and see those kids functioning as a community and just like my, my heart would swell, you know? I mean, it just, that's, that's what I love about it. You know, yeah. I mean, I love feeding people. Anybody who shows up randomly at my house, I'm like, "Let me make you a four-course meal." Let's all sit down together.
That's something that I wouldn't have thought, that a fraternity would be organized like that to have dinner together every night. Is that something that, that was instituted prior to you starting there or is it?
I mean, when my husband worked there before me, they started doing it. Yeah.
So was your husband influential on, in making that happen?
I think so. I mean, I think some of the, the guys that were involved at that point kind of wanted to try doing it this way, you know? Um, yeah.
That, that just seems like a very thoughtful and kind of mature thing to do.
Yeah.
More of a, like a family kind of thing to do. And so that's really interesting to hear that a fraternity did that.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I'm talking smack on fraternities, cuz, well, I, I don't have a lot of experience with them, to be honest. But, um, I think the general
Yeah.
feeling is or thought is that they're just sort of like wild party people. And so that's nice to know that there's a structure.
I mean, they, they can be.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, I mean, the whole reason they're there is because they wanna be together in some fashion and support each other. And so if you create the framework for them to do that more easily, then it becomes a more cohesive group and everybody's better because of it.
That's very nice.
Yeah. I did, um, I did an interview with McSweeney's a number of years ago because it was such a weird job and they, I don't know how they found me, but this reporter called me from the West Coast and was like, "I hear you have a weird job and I wanna talk to you about it." So, you know, so it was, that was the first time I ever really sort of became a fraternity evangelist. Um, but, uh, yeah, I miss being there.
Something needs to stand up for them. That's great that you could do that, that you could be that person.
Yeah. It's getting loud.
It's getting loud. There's a lot of, this, this tends to be a problem. I need to get a studio or something and find people there. But being in lively places is so much better than being in an isolated location. Your family heritage?
Yes.
You were saying your dad is German?
My dad's side of the family is German and my mother's side of the family was Irish. Um...
Good, rich food there?
Yeah. I mean, I definitely identify more with the Irish stuff. And I don't know why that is. But yeah, I mean, like I have all these great old recipes from my grandmother that that's how I celebrate St. Patrick's Day, is I make all her recipes, so.
Your family gatherings must have been interesting. Did the German and the Irish come together?
Um, not so much. It wasn't like there was any animosity. It just didn't happen that way. My grandmother, my grandparents and my mother's side were used to like sort of calm, little more well-to-do settings. And then my father's side, which is a million people when they get together, it's like, woo-hoo, it's crazy. And that just wasn't their scene. So, you know, they really didn't attend each other's functions so much. My mom had two sisters and I'm the only child of all three of those, so, yeah.
But the German side was a little more wild?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we still like Thanksgiving every year is kind of a minimum 50 people.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's great. So who cooks for that?
We all do. Um, my aunt who hosts it, like does the turkeys. And then everybody's in charge of like one thing. I bring cornbread. Somebody brings corn. You know, like, so you only, you make enough of one dish for everybody. It works out really well.
Yeah, kind of like a potluck.
Yes.
Not exactly.
But it's very intentioned. Like it's, you know, it's generally the same menu every year and you, you know what your role is.
Traditional Thanksgiving. That's a good thing to have. You have a pretty big garden at home?
Um, sometimes. This year is, is larger than normal. Yeah. But that's, I successfully grew watermelon for the first time. I've tried it before and what I have grown is watermelon vine. And this year I actually have watermelons that I'm pretty excited about.
Do you have a lot of critters that you have to deal with at your garden?
Yeah. So I live in Braddock Hills now, which, there's a lot of woods. It's a lot of open space and woods and trees and yeah. I mean, like I used to have chickens, but we also have foxes and now I don't have chickens anymore. Yeah, but I, that's, part of the move to that neighborhood was yard acquisition so that I could grow stuff.
Okay. Yeah, there you go.
Cuz I was growing as much as I could on my like yard that was about the size of like these two tables in Oakland. And, um, it's unlimited in what you can do there.
Yeah, absolutely. It's nice to have space. Um, I need more community gardens. You have a history with farmers markets? Tell me about that.
I love farmers markets. I would, like on my days off, when I was doing it full-time, I would go to a farmer's market for fun.
I can totally relate to that.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, again, it's that community.
Yep.
And that's one of the things I love about Bloomfield. The Bloomfield Market is a community. You know, there are a lot of markets that they think, you know, we just invite people into this empty lot and put up their tents and it'll happen. And it doesn't work that way. You gotta work at it. And Bloomfield has embraced that work. And it's just, it's wonderful.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I mean, like it's, and sometimes it's really fun. It's a little bit like joining the circus. You know, you show up in this empty space and all these tents go up and it transforms into this whole thing for a couple hours and then it just, phew, whisks away and it's gone. Um, and that part's really fun.
I, I love that analogy because I feel like vendors at a farmer's market are very much like carnies.
Oh, indeed, yeah.
I worked at the public market
Yeah.
when it was down on Penn Avenue. And that was, you know, we had, it was that same kind of community environment. And that was like every day and, and year round. And that was, it was a really neat environment, a really nice group of people.
That's where Olive and Marlo started.
Oh, right. Oh, so much history. There's so much, so much in the city
Yeah.
around food.
Yeah.
It's really been an incredible place. So when did you first start getting into farmers markets?
I mean, it's been about nine years, nine, 10 years. I did the very first summer that I was doing it. I did a couple of markets for Heather. And then I also did a couple of markets a week for Dawn and Paula from Cherish Creamery. And that was just a random, I had gone to a farmer's market to shop and stopped and was, you know, looking at their product and talking to them. And, and Paula was just like, "Have you ever thought about, are you looking for a job?" And I was like, "Kinda, maybe." It was hard to sort of be representing both of those. Cuz I, you know, I mean, I take it pretty seriously and I feel like it's important for me to represent the product that I'm selling properly and be, you know, knowledgeable. And so it was sort of, it was a little challenging to kind of jump into both that way. But that's really where it started. I mean, I always enjoyed shopping at farmers markets, but it's such a different perspective when you're a vendor. Yeah.
Absolutely. I think people think it's a really easy thing, but it's not.
It's not.
There are so many people who don't like it, who aren't good at it. And it does, definitely takes a special person to be able to, you know, engage strangers
Oh, yeah.
for a brief period of time. Like you can't tell long stories. They have to be very succinct. Maybe one or two sentences.
And oftentimes, like you get the story down and then you just tell everybody that story over and over and over again. You just repeat it with everybody.
Yep. Or the, you know, yeah, little thing about this product or that product and you get your little spiel down.
You develop the pattern. Yeah.
Yep. And you meet some amazing people at farmers markets.
Oh, my gosh, I know. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's like Ollie from Wild Rise. I call him my farmer's market best friend. He's, uh, yeah, he's great.
Are you guys at a lot of the same markets?
Nope, just Bloomfield.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're, are you also at the Forest Hills Market?
Yep.
Okay.
This year I'm doing Bloomfield, Forest Hills. And then, um, Sundays, we do Carnegie and then this brand-new Aspen Wall Market.
On Sundays?
Yeah.
Is it in the same place as the old Aspen Wall Market?
There was a, more, most recently a flea market there.
Right.
Like right along Freeport.
Okay, yeah.
And then the flea market is no more.
Freedom Farms was there.
So Freedom Farms has kind of taken over, turning it into a farmer's market.
Oh, so it's not the flea, it's just the farmers?
Right. Yeah.
Ah, okay. I didn't know. So who else is there?
Freedom Farms and me. Um, occasionally there'll be, you know, two or three other vendors. Um, but it's really, it's, this is the first year. It's, it's rough. And it's not, it's a location that has so much potential. I mean, that's a, that's a, particularly for our products that are kind of a higher price point. Um, that's a really good neighborhood to be in. And most markets suck for the first couple of years.
They do.
You know, and, um, so, yeah.
There's, there's that learning curve and, you know, the East End market is going through that right now. It's really struggling. It's a real fine line cuz you're struggling with, like, there aren't enough vendors. Right. But there aren't customers to bring in the vendors.
Right.
You gotta have both grow at the same time.
Yeah.
And I think the Larmor community is pissed. They're not, it's not in Larmor proper.
Yeah.
Cuz they have this like area, this green space that they wanted to use for that, but that is not big enough for the potential of the East End market. So it's, and, and they, I don't know if they don't shop at the market because they're kind of mad at it or if they don't promote it within the community or something. But it's, I think it's, it's starting to get its footing a little bit this year. And I keep saying to people like, "You've gotta be patient." It's gotta be, you can't move it again. You move it again next year, it's gonna suck for another three years. This is its second year. You gotta let it grow. And people just don't know about it, so.
Yeah. The Carnegie Market that's on Sundays is one that we committed to in the first year. And it was, it was rough. I mean, it was really like, does this make sense to keep coming back? Like it was in a parking lot off of the main street and like unless you stumbled upon it, you didn't necessarily know it was there. And there weren't a lot of vendors and, you know, and it just, and it has just, it's the little market they could. It's just grown and grown. And they made the decision two or three years ago to move it on to Main Street, to shut down the street. So now it feels like it's part of Carnegie and, you know, the, the businesses that are along that street open up on Sundays and are kind of part of the whole thing. And it's, it's great. It's a great market now.
So there are two markets on Sunday?
Yeah.
And what are the hours of each of those markets?
Uh, let's see, Aspen Wall is nine to one.
Okay.
Carnegie is, I think it's 11 to 3 currently, although football season is starting. So they learned that on days that there are Steelers games, customers don't show up once the game starts. So they backed, they changed the hours a little bit.
Pittsburgh is such a unique place. I remember being at the Symphony once during hockey playoffs and they were giving the score in between pieces, in between scores. You know, it was, it was really wild. But yeah, Pittsburgh is a sports town. Don't mess with that. Do not mess with our games. It's so surprising. It's still, it's still surprising me after all these years of being here.
And we tend to think, we committed to a market in Hampton a while back, a number of years ago, that really should have been a great market, should have turned into something. But was an example of a manager who thought, "I'm just gonna let people set up some tents and sell stuff and it'll just happen." You know, that did not put the effort into, you know, maybe bring in some live entertainment, maybe bring it, you know, like, and promote it, you know, and do that whole, do all the things that you need to do. Um, and it really, after two or three years of doing that one, it just, it wasn't growing. It wasn't turning... it just, it wasn't growing. It wasn't turning into a thing and we walked away from it.
So let's talk about that a little bit more because I think people don't understand, like, why can't you just set up tents and then, you know, if you build it, they will come? But, you know, what are you building when you just let people set up tents? You're not building that third place.
Right.
And that's what I think a lot of market managers don't realize. Like, you have to have a personal relationship with the vendors. Because if the vendors don't like the market management, they're not gonna come back. They're not gonna feel obligated. They're gonna be like, peace out. And if the community doesn't feel like there's more, more for them than just going to buy groceries, they're not gonna stay there. They're not gonna keep coming back.
Going to Aldi is easier than walking around in a farmer's market, particularly like in the middle of the summer or in a day when it's raining. Or, you know, like, it's predictable, like, here's the list of things I need. I'm going to the store, I'm getting those things. That's not the farmer's market experience. Um, so you have to make it a place that people want to go to. And then once they get used to shopping that way, they keep coming back. That's my theory at least. Yeah.
Yeah, that totally makes sense. So what other elements do you think make a successful market that you see?
I mean, I think the right mix of vendors is important. I think you have to curate vendors, you know? Yeah, what else? I'm a big advocate for live entertainment. I feel like particularly when you are starting and don't have a whole lot going on, something like that helps make it a fun experience.
What have you seen that's like the most fun live entertainment that really is a draw? Cause I see a lot of, there's a guy on a guitar in a tent and, you know, that's, that's nice and good for him and everything. But like, I don't often see that benefiting the guy or the market necessarily too much. I, I don't, I could be wrong. I could totally be wrong.
I feel like it totally adds to the atmosphere, you know? Because that's not a thing that you're gonna see when you're at Giant Eagle.
Sure.
You're not gonna come down the aisle and have somebody playing a guitar.
Thoughts for Giant Eagle, just saying.
Exactly.
Maybe a couple magicians?
Yeah, balloon artists, something, yeah.
Right.
Um, I was doing the Lawrenceville Market for a while. And Lawrenceville has done, did a really good job of making space for community organizations to also participate. Like I was doing Lawrenceville during COVID, you know? And you, you could get your COVID vaccine at the market, things like that.
Yeah.
Um, that definitely helped bring people in.
Yeah, I think I've, I've seen the city markets change under the new leadership of, uh, city parks. And they're, they're doing more integrating of other city services into it, which is something that I've been an advocate for years in my work that I did with the city. I mean, that's, we did that farmer's market study and made recommendations like that.
Yeah.
And it just fell on deaf ears until Catherine Vargas picked it up and she's done some amazing things. She also, she also did the amazing thing of hiring Christina Howell, who started the Bloomfield Market, to consult on-
Yeah.
Developing the markets in the cities.
I know her from, uh, our kids went to the same elementary school. And I was the president of the PTO and she, uh, yeah. Again, Pittsburgh, small town. And so in my capacity now, working for a state rep, that was one of the things that was important to me when we were looking for ways to outreach in our district. I looked for farmers markets. So like, there's a Thursday, a little tiny market in Wilkinsburg on Thursdays that's mostly like a free giveaway. There are produce vendors and it's a pay what you can market. But we're there. We set up a table and we do mobile constituent services and just kind of are there. We're part of that community. And that's something that was important to me to bring to my current job, so.
Yeah. One of the, the most unassuming market that is very well marketed is the Swissvale Market. Have you ever been there?
When I was doing stuff for Cherish Creamery, we used to go there. But now because I'm always in Bloomfield on Saturdays, I don't ever get to go.
Well, I remember just like, if you are anywhere, anywhere in the vicinity in like earshot of Swissvale, you will, you will know that market is happening. Cause there's signage and it's just really well done.
Yeah.
I admire them a great deal for that. Farmers markets are vital and, and being that third place-
Yeah.
Is really important. Cause you run into people that you see. So once you start getting the regular traffic and you start seeing people, I mean, it's, Pittsburgh is a small town, so you're gonna run into people that you know pretty much anywhere.
It's so neat to be at particularly Bloomfield when it came back after COVID or during COVID, when it was safe to come back. Cause there, yeah, I mean, there were customers, people, like, people hadn't seen each other because that was where they saw each other. And it was just, it was just a-
You have a little foot bump, like, hey, with the mask in the hand.
Reunion for a couple of weeks there. It was so neat.
Yeah, that was some tense times.
Yeah.
I remember fighting for the Bloomfield Market cause they were trying to find another location because they were almost kicked out of their location.
Yeah.
But they ended up being able to be there.
Yeah.
That was great. And that, I think that was a good decision in West Penn's part two. But that was quite a time. Wow.